Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order and welcome you all here tonight and all of you at home watching. We really appreciate your interest in the city and encourage you to continue to write us and email us and call us and come to the meetings whenever you feel like it. The first item is the roll call. Councilmember Norton?
Here.
Councilmember Story?
Here.
Councilmember Bator?
Here.
Councilmember Termini?
Here.
Mayor Harland? Here. Will everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for May we have the report on the closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The closed session began at approximately 6:30 PM and all council members were present. The council members received an update on labor negotiations from their labor negotiator and gave her direction, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no additional materials except our mail we have here on the dais tonight. This is a time now for additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any changes?
Staff has none.
Then we'll go right on to public comments. This is a chance for the public to address us on any topic not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please wait till we get to it and you're welcome to speak then. You have three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Marilyn Garrett. I'm here again on this huge problem of wireless microwave radiation. Want to draw people's attention to the October issue of the Connection Magazine, "How Well Are You Protecting Your Child on the Back?" And it says, "Wouldn't spray your child with DDT? Then don't spray your child with wireless radiation." Since I'm a school teacher, children are very dear to my heart and taught for second and third grade for 30 years. The World Health Organization in 2011 listed wireless microwave radiation from cell phones and Wi-Fi as a possible carcinogen alongside DDT, lead, and car gas exhaust. And some of the symptoms that independent scientists find repeatedly, and I recommend people see TakeBackYourPower.net because you'll see many of these scientists in this film. It's an investigation of the smart grid, the health impacts, the surveillance aspects of it, fires, et cetera. Children and adults who experience health problems due to wireless radiation report symptoms that include headaches, insomnia, heart palpitations, anxiety, ear ringing, heart palpitations, and what is this loss, and even, and many disabilities. Studies show evidence for effects on DNA, genetics, childhood behavior, fertility, and blood-brain barrier, and the immune and nervous system disorders. Other studies find increased risk of cancer and links to autism and addiction. Autism, when I was teaching, started teaching in 1965 until about 2000, was so rare to hear from, hear about. Now, what is it, 1 in 50? There's something in the film Take Back Your Power, you'll see a scientist showing the increase of the electromagnetic microwave radiation with the increase in childhood autism. His name's Dr. Klinghardt. Page six in here has an article on distributed antenna systems, which is touted as bringing broadband to everyone, but it's also bringing huge amounts of radiation. And what's happening, instead of five-cell towers, they need 100 for this 4G technology. So Verizon is taking over the public rights away and putting these on utility poles all over, my, all over. And the city of Capitola doesn't track the 4G towers. Thirteen of them planned for Aptos, Freedom Boulevard, McDonald, Day Valley. And there is a zoning administrators' hearing on the 25th at 9:00 AM at the county government building. But to me, it's like they've occupied the commons, Verizon. It's definitely microwave radiation that's extremely intense, that's resulted in scorched streets in South Africa, and that's forcing what's called dirty electricity, transients on the line for everybody. And they're very close together, so it can be outside your bedroom window. Very, very damaging. It needs to be halted. We need to have the public well-being protected and defended. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would someone else like to speak tonight? Good evening, and you can sign in if you'd like to have your name spelled correctly.
All right. Good evening. My name is Melody Serino. I'm a former resident of Capitola. I live in Watsonville now. I just wanted to come and offer my appreciation and thanks for continuing to host the Mermaid Triathlon. I was a participant this past weekend. It's a race I look forward to every year. This is my third year participating. And I know that in these tough times, it's hard for, to devote resources to these sorts of things because you have tough choices to make. And all of us who are athletes and love doing that race really appreciate your support and hope you continue to host the Mermaid Triathlon in years ahead. Thanks.
Thanks. It's a great event. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Peter Matur, and I went to a Tuesday night city council meeting about desalination where it was kind of shut down. But everybody keeps, and the newspapers especially, keeps making this mistake. I think it's a mistake where I say a desal is dead, but there's four, so many different ways of desalination. For instance, using vacuum and distillation techniques and so forth. What basically everybody's talking about is reverse osmosis, which is the one that requires a lot of energy. The other ones require energy too, but there's going to be, being done a lot of research. And there's also chemical desalination, which hasn't been perfected yet. And so you just have to keep your eyes open, and eventually there'll be desalination. I trust there'll be desalination, but using some other method. So here, when it asks, "Desal," be more specific, say reverse osmosis is what you should be against because as to, even though it's the most common method right now, especially a municipal method. Ships usually use some kind of distillation techniques on, on a board ship to, to create the desalinated water. But as far as municipals, they usually use reverse osmosis. Very energy intensive. The membranes are getting better and doing energy recovering processes, especially in, in California. But I think in the end, there'll be a lot of more research done. And oh, one of the other things is if you do chemical desalination, then the byproduct could be sodium, which is almost as efficient as lithium for, for automobile batteries, for instance, for your hybrid cars, and a lot cheaper. And as soon as they do some research and get the temperature down below boiling point on lithium, on sodium batteries, it'll be another method of, of greenhouse gas reduction. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening.
Hello. I'm Sandy Erickson, and I live at 117 Cabrillo Street in Capitola. Okay. And I have some copies. I'm sorry, this is, this is not high-tech. It's high-tech for my generation, I guess. What I want to talk about tonight is the traffic hazard on Park Avenue. And I've got a description of two things. The, the top page, if I put them together correctly, shows that there are three streets that come in in about a 300-foot stretch of Park Avenue. And the speed limit signs printed on the road are as you see them on my depiction. So right here where traffic is trying to get in and out, you've got one group that's going 35 and another that's supposed to be going 25. And on the second sheet, you can see that within about 1,000 feet of this little mess is a stop sign at Coronado, and that's the only street that's down there. And I know, I'm the person who came tonight, but a number of my neighbors are very distressed about this also. And it doesn't seem that any reasonable person could defend this as being safe. And we think that the speed limit should not change until you get to that stop sign and then start your 35 miles an hour if that's what you want to do. Now, I understand that there are, there's this often cited, uh, traffic something, and I went to the codes and looked it up, you know. And if, whatever study they did has to be more than 15 years old, because I've been here that long. And, and I've been hearing about this. And, and I think that, that the city being aware of this and allowing this to continue puts, you know, should have sizable risk for the city. And I would like to urge that, that we look at this and see if we can't do something. But for sure, we don't need the speed limit changing right here in this 300-foot section. That just seems wildly insane to me for any reasonable person to think that's safe. You can also see that across over here is a metro stop. And of course, there are no crosswalks in here, any place. So, and I know that the general prevailing thing about a crosswalk is, is it is a place that the drivers can aim for the pedestrians. So, but I think that, and I'm hoping that my depictions will have this, you know, bring this a little more on the radar screen of the city. The other thing that I noticed, and you can see that I show where the 35 mile an hour sign that's not painted on the road is. It's all right there. And it's about a tenth of a mile from the Wesley Grove Lane to the top of that, a little more than a tenth, where the big dip in Park Avenue goes down. Well, you can see that 35 mile an hour sign from back there. So cars start adjusting and doing strange things. So I really think that, a couple things. Number one, that the speed limit should be 25 miles an hour all the way to the stop sign. Or get rid of the stop sign at Coronado and put a stop sign either at Wesley or at Cabrillo Street so that you can have some access from there. But I would, I would urge the city to take a look at this because I think it's a hazard. And I think, you know, when it's, when you can see the depiction, that not doing something was, is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll look into it. Would anyone else like to speak? Then we'll go on to city council comments. Are there any announcements from the council? Dennis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Some RTC, Regional Transportation Commission news. Highway 1 southbound has now been open to three lanes in, in the section they've been working on. And the northbound lanes, we are told and promised that it'll be open by Thanksgiving. So as of that date, the, the highway improvements will be finished for a number of years. It's reasonable to think that it'll be at least six years before you'll see the next section done, so the public does get some relief from what's happening there. But as a solution, there is no money to improve the highway any farther until we have a tax measure or come into some mystery funds. It's more than likely that we won't see any improvements on that highway for the next six years.
Anything else?
No, that's fine.
Sam?
No comments tonight.
Ed?
No comments, Madam Mayor. We had, the chief and I had our barbecue up at Hunter Hill Winery. It was one of the auction items for the Art and Wine Festival. Capitola locals purchased it, Capitola locals attended, and it was a joy to live in a town where the chief and one of the council members can slave over a hot barbecue and serve our citizens. And it's, did Sandy still here? Oh, Sandy. Two years ago, I participated as a citizen volunteer, and it happens every few years that the call goes out with our radar guns, and we did surveys, and Park Avenue was surveyed. And it is a constant frustration to me that if everybody's driving faster, we have to let them. I don't understand that. And Mr. City Manager, is the great and powerful sequester going to damage the city in any way?
The, the simple answer is at this point, we don't see any significant impacts to the city. Obviously, down the road, there could be, but at this point, we have no significant contracts with the federal government.
Washington DC is shut down, but we're still doing fine.
Apparently, we are.
Excellent. Thank you.
I attended the Grey Bears Annual Harvest Lunch, and it was wonderful. It was a lot of fun. There was hundreds and hundreds and thousands of people there. It's a great event and a great organization. And don't forget that they have a secondhand store on Shana Clear, and they sell furniture and all kinds of wonderful things. And you can also donate there, and it is a tax write-off. So support that organization that does so much for, for the community in so many ways. I attended a ribbon cutting at a new Century 21 real estate office on 41st Avenue, and they are very happy to be here. They love Capitola. They love 41st Avenue, and they love it that the home prices are going up, and they're making a little more money. But they were a very enthusiastic group of people, and on their wall, the day after the whales were here, they had pictures of the whales. They had taken them, developed them, and put them up on the walls of their office already. And anyway, that was, that was a lot of fun. I encourage you to go and visit the museum if you haven't seen the exhibit. It's wonderful. And we have our books for sale, our Capitola history books for sale. That's all. So we'll go on to the city treasurer. Are there, any, any comments from the city treasurer? Welcome. We're so happy you're here. Comments from staff members? Announcements? Do you want to talk about the parking lot next door? How the progress on the parking lot that people were wondering about?
Didn't really have anything planned, but contractors started. They're demoing all the concrete pads in there right now, finding all the utilities that we need to abandon and working on that. They hope to begin doing the rough grading probably in the next, not next week, the following week. And once they get the rough grading in, they'll come in and do the retaining wall work, repairing the retaining walls in there and the slide repair. So.
Will weather slow them down, and will we have miraculous rain coming our way in the next month or two?
Yeah, but I mean, there will be weather delays if we, when we get some rain, hopefully. And, you know, we'll have to do some stormwater protection as part of that, and that's part of their contract. So we're prepared for the rains.
Have you had experience with them before?
No, I haven't. They've never done a job in the county, but, or in the city, but they have done work for the county of Santa Cruz. And they seem to have, have good references with everybody I talk to.
That's great. That's great.
Steve, I have a question. The, the Noble Gulch section of, of the creek through the Noble Gulch Park.
Yes.
Has Zone 5 taken responsibility for maintaining and taking care of that now, or is that still a question of whose responsibility?
The open part or the pipeline part?
Well, the open part to the closed part, that whole section right there.
They're responsible for the pipe, and, and they have taken responsibility and made repairs to that. Upstream of the pipe, we've historically gone in there and removed branches and other things that are down in there. So they have not done that. Regarding Zone 5 and, and the city, I met with John Presley today. We had lunch together, and we agreed to, we wanted to talk in the next couple of weeks about trying to define what Zone 5's jurisdiction is in the city and try and get that so that we're all on the same page. So I think we'll see something in the next, hopefully in the next month, maybe two months that we can bring to the council in that direction.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The next item is board commissions and committee appointments, and there aren't any. So we'll go on to the consent calendar, which is a list of usually relatively minor items that we handle with one motion rather than separate motions, unless anyone would like to pull an item for separate discussion and vote, or a council member would like to pull the item for a separate discussion and vote. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull an item to talk about it? Is there any item that a council member would like to pull?
Move the consent calendar.
I'd like, I'd like to pull item number, number D, please.
Okay.
Second?
Then we'll go ahead and vote on the rest of these items. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to handle that now, Dennis?
If you'd like, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
Okay. I have real concerns in the way the resolution is written, where it's recommending that we, we put 57 parking spaces dedicated to a future hotel site, not in the whole city, but in a certain zoning, and that zoning being CV. If everyone understands, even this property we stand on today is not in CV zoning. So the limitations on the council in the future by putting that really designates it down to one piece of property. I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think we have a commitment to even seeing a hotel on that, on that site. And to designate 57 spaces that'll tie them up for at least five to six, if not longer, years without being able to do any improvements of any type within the city is, is backwards to the resolution of putting new parking spaces in here. One of the ideas of putting new parking spaces in, into this, below, to provide for the village or for this community was is that it freed up the ability for businesses to actually expand or be able to, be able to improve the buildings that they have. And by doing this, we're not, we're not opening that door. So I would like to see is the, the possibility of, yes, say that it's to large hotels that provide valet parking, and that it's provided to anywhere within, at this point, anywhere within the city limits of Capitola that could get use of this parking lot, and not just the CV zoning.
I have a question. So Dennis, you're proposing that it still remains not to be piecemealed out, it's still valet parking, large hotel specific, but just take the CV zoning designation out?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to make that.
Jimmy, do you want to talk about that a little bit, what if a business comes in and wants to expand and doesn't, can't provide the parking for it?
It might, but it has to be a hotel with, with valet parking.
Yeah, council members will recall that the direction from council at the last meeting, what we're talking about is a policy, an administrative policy, which would guide how the 57 spaces that will be created through the development of this lower parking lot could be used to facilitate economic development goals. And at the last meeting, you'll recall that the draft administrative policy had language, relatively flexible language. It was just restricted to hotels as defined in our TOT code. This new, this, based on the council direction, this new version comes back as large hotels that provide valet service as defined in the zoning ordinance, which is far more restrictive about, you know, it's just hotels. It's not bed and breakfast. It's just hotels. So, Councilmember Norton, what he's proposing, the other restriction in here is, is that the proposed project must be in the CV district. And there are, you know, this is a, really a question for council's, council policy discretion. The lot is located in a relatively central location. The CV district is on one side. Councilmember Norton is correct, this piece of property that we're sitting on today is not in the CV zoning district. The Upper Village is not in the CV zoning district. None of those properties, to the best of my knowledge, is there a hotel planned on them. However, it would be more flexible in the future should you do that. Also, keep in mind that amending administrative policies is not, doesn't require any approval beyond the city council. So regardless of which outcome you choose tonight, the option does exist down the road to modify it without too many bureaucratic steps.
Well, since that, the other restrictions are still in place, I see no reason why taking out the CV zone language doesn't really matter. I mean, obviously, someone who builds a hotel on 41st Ave- I mean, obviously, someone who builds a hotel on 41st Avenue is not going to do in-loop fees at $24,000 a space here. And if someone builds a hotel on Gales, and before you all write me emails, no one's getting ready to build a hotel on Gales property, that would correspond to the motion or the amendment to the item.
If I may, to that point, Mike, though, if we were to do this and open it up, wouldn't it be possible for a hotel developer on 41st Avenue to block a hotel in the village by spending the $24,000 to acquire these?
Or not let them be able to buy the spaces?
Well, right.
Because they'd be sold.
Right. If they come in and soup up these lots, then there's no possibility for a hotel in the village because it is essential and critical to that project, that the ability to have in-loop parking. I thought that what we were trying to do is alleviate the traffic and the parking in the central village zone, and that is part of the tenet of this. And I'm okay with removing it at this point, but it seems to me it does open up that can of worms where you could potentially have the ability of another developer who wanted to, in essence, kind of clog the system, acquire these lots, have a valet shuttle, and we are now hamstrung with not having parking unless you expand from 57 parking spaces to now, and then we're eating up more of the parking that we-
Or rebuild the structure, but that's a diabolical plan, I don't like that.
Well-
I know, I mean, that's an interesting way to think about it.
They still have to go through the city process. The city would have to offer them those spaces. So, the city still has to say if they were to offer it to someone on 41st Avenue, unless they had good reason. I don't see why in the world-
But if you don't, I mean, if it's not restrictive to any particular zoning, I don't see our ability to say no.
Councilmember Story, I think, as drafted today, that the council would be the ultimate decider whether or not the spaces could go to any particular project. And there were three findings that were suggested for that decision. One was that it's consistent with the Coastal Act and the city's local adopted coastal plan. The off-site parking in the proposed project would reduce, excuse me, would reduce traffic impacts and provide a design more consistent with the historic character of the village, and the proposed project will help to facilitate the city's economic development goals. So, I think, depending on where we want to go, if we were to go the direction that Councilmember Norton suggested, we probably would want to change number two to just say simply reduce traffic impacts and provide a design, a better project design. But I do think that that would give the latitude, if someone were to put forward a straw man and say, "I'm just going to, you know, hold these parking spaces so nobody else can," I'm not sure how, in that scenario, we would see that as advancing our economic goals if we were able to discern that that was the applicant's actual intentions.
Yes.
Along with that, there is no proposal for the hotel. We don't know if there ever is going to be one here. If you want to tie that money up, the potential for bringing in money may be sooner than you think. It may be there, maybe somebody comes forward with a project, this is, it's been discussed, it's the place where we're sitting right today. Maybe the hotel would be here, and that would be adjacent to the parking lot, which gives us the opportunity to build this parking garage that much sooner. So, to tie it, by dedicating it to one single piece of property, you're more than likely are tying it up with no revenue for at least five to seven years. That's just my guess on what it would be. So, this, well, all this does is it gives opportunity for people who see those opportunities to go there and use that, and use those 57. We don't, we'd be better off not saying anything about the 57 and give it to nobody than to do it and disallocate it to one piece of property that we don't even know is going to be developed, nor there's a community, may not be community census to do that, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I'd like to revert back to what the city manager said, you know, this is a policy, which means we can amend this should that need arise. I think we made a decision on this, and I could almost agree that we could almost do nothing, but we made the decision to allocate for a large hotel, and I think we're hopeful that that happens. But, you know, we can change this as a policy, it would be easy to do, as you mentioned. All we're going to do now is muddy the waters and complicate it. I think I, the reason for that parking lot that's being developed right now is to test if we can resolve the parking dilemma in Capitola. And if we do that and it's successful, then that gives us the groundwork to possibly plan for a large structure, and that structure is where we start opening up opportunities to the businesses and to expand. You know, we're not going to, they're not going to be tied up, those spaces are going to be used, they're not going to sit there and say, "You can't park here." It's something we set aside should someone present themselves for a hotel, and I'd still like to remain committed to that option. But if it doesn't pan out that way and another project comes along, it's a policy that can be resolved right here, and I think we've already made a good decision on this policy.
And since we're going to have the new parking lot with those 200 and some spaces, we could look at our parking requirements for the village, and if a business wants to expand, we can say, "Go ahead," because we have this parking lot now. So, that's something we can look at separately through the general plan process, to open that up, because I don't want to stifle other people's opportunities in the village either, if they want to expand a little bit or add another table and chairs or something like that. So, I'd like to look at that, have staff come back and look at that a little bit and see if there's some way that we can do that, or whether that's tied to the Coastal Commission.
I thought we were talking about doing that in our zoning with regard to the number of parking spaces per square foot or per table, and that that's not what these spaces are for, certainly.
There's certainly a difference. The LCP identified a deficit, if you will, and we have now filled the identified deficit in our LCP, and we have 57 additional spaces. We can look at the ratios in the general plan, as Councilmember Termini suggested, which could free up some businesses. And as we talked about last time, you know, it's a policy called how those 57 spaces, and hopefully more in the future when we build the parking structure, can be allocated to what kinds of uses. But before you deny, is this policy decision about these 57 spaces and adopting an administrative policy about how they'd be made available?
Can I just clarify what my thought is here? My thought is not to take away the large hotel, not to take away the requirement for valet parking. It is just not to designate to a single piece of property, and we're doing that as soon as we add the term CV into it. You know, the CV is everything that's side of here. It has nothing to do with all, what's all around this parking lot that it could be used for. Again, large hotel, fine, valet parking, fine, that makes a definition, and it certainly holds us to our commitment to do a hotel of some type in that. And whatever brings us the revenue in to build a parking garage which relieves village traffic the quickest would be the best thing for us, as well as providing the possibility of a hotel. That's what my motion is, so just taking the CV out of it.
Would anyone like to speak on this item? Good evening.
Good evening. I wasn't going to speak, but since it got pulled and it's being massaged around, I would like to take this opportunity to say that years and years and years ago, the city purchased Pacific Cove for this express purpose of creating permanent parking solutions for the village, not to create a parking bank so that consultants can figure out ways to develop large projects in other part of Capitola, it's to solve the issues in Capitola Village. It was not created to create a parking bank so that you guys can sell the city hall site to a private hotel developer and build something else and still have the whole theater property in play. The in-loop program came up specifically to set the stage with a potential developer for a hotel on the theater property, saying, "We, the city, are interested in working with you to develop a well-designed hotel project that will have broad economic benefit to our community and the village." That's it. So, already, this subtle attempt to water down your good directions from the last city council meeting, linking it, A, to a hotel, a large hotel, and B, to a user that will provide the seamless link between the parking structure and the parkers, we're already starting to water that down. So, I would totally urge you to stick with what the direction you gave the staff last week, which, last meeting, which is link it to a hotel, the 57 spaces, I understand the need to sort of reserve those or allocate those with the Coastal Commission, but let's not already start tinkering and watering it down. Thank you.
Can I ask Nels a question?
Sure.
Nels, you sat on that committee when they purchased this property, is that correct?
I did, years and years ago.
Was there discussion about a hotel? The reason for it was to build a hotel?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Dismissed.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Good evening.
Good evening. I also didn't expect to speak. My name is Adam Samuels. I live on El Salto Drive. I'm just interested in this discussion because, as it relates to the Monarch Cove and the proposed expansion there, my understanding is that that's currently zoned as visitor serving. So, this change would enable potentially some sort of, if I understand it correctly, some usage of this parking spaces by that project, but if it's left at CV, it would be excluded. Is that correct, just at least in the understanding of the language?
I think that's correct.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Great, okay. I don't know that I have an opinion one way or the other. I have an opinion, obviously, about the project as a whole, but I just wasn't clear and just wanted to get clear for myself about this matter. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, is there, Dennis, you made a motion? Or would someone like to make a motion?
Oh, you mean the move for the correction? Well, Dennis, you pulled it, so.
I'll move for the correction.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, roll call?
I just, I'm sensing a split vote, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
No.
Councilmember Botroff?
No.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Harland?
No. Okay, thank you very much.
I think we need a motion now to pass it in its current form, do we not?
Yes.
I'll also move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is nine, the general government public hearings, and the first item is a report from Teresa Landers, the Director of Santa Cruz Public Libraries, regarding the Santa Cruz Public Libraries Facilities Master Plan, which we have a copy of upstairs at the counter if anyone wants to read it. Is there one at the Capitola Library?
Uh, yes.
Good. And it's also, I believe, mine.
There's one at the library and there's one online.
When, what website would they use? Did they go to your website?
Santa Cruz PL.org.
Okay.
And then you get to it from there.
Okay, well, welcome.
If anybody has trouble getting there, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I've been actually on the road, going to all the various jurisdictions, giving essentially the same presentation, to just trying to give you some information, sorry, on where we're at with this. So, I'm sure I'm set up here. Okay, so, I've been at the library now four years, and since I've been there, we've engaged in about several different planning efforts. As you know, when, four years ago, things were not in very good shape, and we had, didn't have a lot of direction. So, we embarked on a strategic plan, which is actually getting awfully close to its expiration. I don't even want to think about that. Then we launched into a service model and staffing plan to do a restructuring in order to try to stem the flow of the trend towards, shall I say, bankruptcy. So, we did a major restructuring two years ago, and as part of the task force that worked on the service model plan, there was a recommendation made that we needed to look at the facilities. There was a decision made through that service model that we were going to have, keep the 10 branches we have. And it was also recognized that we hadn't done much attention to those branches physically, with the exception of two that I'll talk about later. So, we needed to do something because the branches had had no deferred maintenance, they were, they're all getting rather old. Felton being over 100 years old, 110, I believe it is, and the downtown library in Santa Cruz, 50 years old, and Capitola, well, it's not that old, but was only intended to be 10 years, I think, as a, the modular buildings, and I think we're 10 years past that. So, a lot of the buildings definitely were reaching the end of life. So, it was decided we needed to do a facilities master plan to guide us into the future. And just to top it all off, and they happened to come together at the same time, we also did a technology plan to see where we were going in terms of technology, because obviously that's a major part of what we're doing now in libraries, both on the staff end and for the public. The way I like to look at this is, I have this concept of these four circles that are all in balance around the concept of service to the community, which is what we're all about. We have our collections, those are the materials. We have the technology for both our end and for this public. We have the staff that serves the public, and we have the facilities. And these four need to be in balance. If these aren't in balance, then it doesn't matter how much staff we have, if we don't have any materials, or we don't have any computers to deliver those materials, we're dead in the water. So, we pay a lot of attention in the last couple of years through those various plans to the staffing. We did a restructuring, we did a new staffing plan and model. We, when I came, the materials budget was about $470,000. It had been slashed in half. This year, it's going to be over $1 million. Technology plan, also paying attention to what we need to do. We've got replacement plan for computers in place, and we're upgrading. Everybody's getting fiber. We have one branch left to get fiber, it should be in by the end of, end of this month. That's La Selva Beach. So, Capitola, we brought fiber to Capitola, we're no longer on cable. So, facilities is the one last area that really needs some attention. So, what is the facilities master plan and what isn't it? Because it's important to recognize both of these aspects. Well, we've got 11 buildings, we've got 10 branches, and then the headquarters building downtown is a separate building. So, the first plan, the first step of the plan was to look at what will it take to keep the doors open, make no changes to where they are, to what they currently are, other than keeping them in the condition that they can stay open. That's basic maintenance, and it's, you know, the paint, the roofs, the windows, whatever can go wrong, actually, the furniture and the carpet, because that does wear out. We also looked at 24, what will it take to bring all the libraries up to 21st century standards? We only have one facility that actually meets 21st century standards for libraries, and that's the Scotts Valley Library, because it's only two years old. Then the third aspect was to look at where do we need additional square footage? We really don't need a lot of additional square footage. The Felton Library, Capitola, and Aptos are the three that really need to be bigger than what they are now. Pretty obvious in Felton and Capitola, given their condition, Aptos is as busy as the Scotts Valley Library is, in half the size. So, we looked at downtown library, doesn't need more square footage, I'm getting ahead of myself here, but it does need to be upgraded. So, how do we bring the libraries to 21st century standards as we defined in the new service model, and where do we need to actually replace them or make them bigger? So, there were recommendations. The recommendations in the plan, it's the ideal. If we had all the money that we needed, this is what we should be doing. It's not necessarily what we have to do, but it's really the ideal and what we should do. What it isn't, it is not a prescription. It's not saying, "Do this, or you die." You know, it's not the doctor telling us what we have to do to survive. It doesn't present financial options, that was purposely left out. That was decided we would look at that separately after the fact. It doesn't prioritize projects. We asked them to give us a methodology to prioritize the projects with, you know, eight branches needing changes to them, what order are we going to do it in? That was not part of the plan. And that relates to phasing as well. This project's more important than that project, or which project should come first. We did not ask the consultant to do that. So, what did the plan tell us? Well, it told us that, I like to call it reaping the harvest of neglect. We basically, because of budget reasons, did nothing on these buildings for many years. And the district started in 1996, buildings were inherited, and there really was very little done, other than the very basics, or what had to be done. We had some mold in Aptos, we had to mitigate that mold. But other than emergencies, nothing was done for quite a while. So, the result, about $16 million over 10 years is what is estimated we need in order just to keep the doors open as the buildings are now. That's if we have carpet, we replace with carpet. If we have, you know, chairs that wear out, we replace them with light chairs. It also tells us that in order to have 21st century libraries, as I started to mention, only Scotts Valley is there at this point. Live Oak, while a new library and very beautiful, was not designed according to 21st century standards. It has three service decks, desks right, you know, I call them within spitting distance of each other, it should have had one. There's a lot of things, I'm not going to get into details on that, but the trends that we're going towards, self-service, marketplace, places for people to meet and get together, Live Oak just isn't set up for that. So, even though it's new, it needs some changes. So, the plan tells us what it's going to take, branch by branch, dollars-wise and spelling it out, in terms of, well, you need to do this, or you need to do that. So, the cost for this aspect of it, of bringing everything up to the 21st century is 29 to 60- $68 million. And this includes replacing some of the branches. So, what is, what is a 21st century library? Well, like I mentioned, it's this one, one-desk, self-service, flexible space. It's not just a meeting room. Have you all been to Scotts Valley? Everybody's been to Scotts Valley? Yeah?
It's fabulous, especially that patio in the back.
Yes.
It has the names engraved in the wood. Very subtle and very beautiful.
I'm going to talk to you about that at the very end, because I have an invitation. Flexible spaces, Scotts Valley's an excellent example of fireside room being a flexible space. That room is used as a meeting room space. It's also used for people to study, it's a quiet area. Renewable energy is something we would like to see in, in our libraries, as we'd like to see in all our buildings. And AMHS is Automated Materials Handling System. Has anybody been over the hill, where if you return a book, it goes on a conveyor belt, you get a receipt when you check it in? It's cool and all that. We need to look at that for some of our branches in terms of efficiency. It's providing old services in new ways. This is the marketplace concept. That's what you get when you walk into the Scotts Valley Library. There's shelves right in the front where this kind of materials are face-out. We try to do it in some of our other locations, but we're kind of short on space and furniture. Teens are, we're a major draw for teens these days. Another example is Scotts Valley. It's been over-successful with the teens. I'm, I'm not sure I can really say that, but it's been so successful with the teens that we've had to actually do some extra programming in order to keep control. Local history is something that libraries are finding only they can do. Google's great, but it's international. Nobody cares somewhere else in the world, they're not going to collect the material on Capitola, or Santa Cruz, or Scotts Valley. Local libraries and historical societies collect those kinds of materials. We're embarking on a project that's going to be, it's called Local History, it's actually not the name of it, they've just named it and I forgot what they're calling it, but it's a local history roadshow where we're going to bring scanners out to branches to have people bring in photographs from, that they have collected. They get to keep a copy of the photograph, we get to post a copy on our webpage. And we're creating a special website for this. It's a program you'll hear about more in next year, 2014. So, local history is something that libraries do very well, and it's very important because no one else is going to do it. But those do require special spaces and special treatment of materials. There's new services that libraries are embarking on. Maker Spaces are very popular in libraries now. We're fortunate in Santa Cruz to have a Makers, the Makers Factory downtown Santa Cruz, but a lot of libraries are getting into Maker Spaces, which is the 3D printing and that kind of thing. Media Creation is happening, there's a lot of teen programs are now involved with media creation. Kids making videos, making audio recordings, whatever, doing that kind of production in libraries. Cafes have always been popular in libraries, but we don't have any, so it's kind of new to us. And tech labs, places for people to learn how to use computers. We have iPad classes, we have e-reader classes, we are, we're starting iPad class for seniors, for actually seniors with Alzheimer's. iPads have been shown to be very successful for people with dementia. We have a program that's starting to work with that. Just learning to use computers. Obviously, you need a computer now in order to get a job, in order to file for the new medical, the Affordable Care Act. You need to do it through a computer. The library is, is a major place where people are doing all those kinds of activities. So, tech labs or other services we could offer if we had the right spaces for them. So, branch by branch, I know you only care about Capitola, but I'm going to tell you anyway. So, Boulder Creek, Garfield Park, and La Selva Beach, what we're looking at is, we really need to bring those into the 21st century, possibly looking at alternative energy. We're not looking at any additions or major changes besides what needs to happen to keep the facilities up to date, both in terms physically and in terms of how libraries operate. Brands of 40, Live Oak, or all of the above, plus we'd like to add teen and group study areas in those, in those libraries. Boulder Creek, Garfield Park, and La Selva Beach just aren't big enough to do that. So, Aptos, we'd be looking at either being on the same site, everything you saw before plus additional square footage. So, in Aptos, the same site, we could renovate it to 11,000 square feet, we could tear it down and build a new building at 16,000 square feet. Felton obviously needs a new building. If you've been, anybody been to Felton, you'll know it needs to be replaced. And there's a site for it that's been, working on getting a donation from the Veruni family, and it's, we programmed it at 9,300 square feet. Scotts Valley, Scotts Valley itself probably may need some additional square footage, given how popular it's been, but within the next 10 years, by the time this plan is finished, we will need to renew the furniture, floor coverings, et cetera. The roof is the original roof. It may be a quote "new" building, but it was a remodel. So, it is going to need that roof replaced sooner rather than later. There's also the opportunity, the other third of the building, because of the changes in redevelopment, it can't be, has to be used for a public use. They can't use it for commercial. They had intended to rent it out to some business to, for income. They can't do that because of the whole RDA thing. So, there's possibilities for that space. There is a theater group trying to move in there. If that theater group can't raise the funds to do it, possibly we could expand it into a theater or flexible space that had a theater component that was run by the library. Could be a Maker Space, could be the media, content creation, could just be additional library space and turn some of the other space into, you know, we could create an extra meeting room or quiet study area. Downtown, we're not looking at increasing the square footage. There's anything from a structural remodel where you replaced all the systems. The downtown library has a boiler, doesn't even have an HVAC system, and every time their boiler breaks, and every winter something goes, it's $5,000 to replace it because it's so old, they have to manufacture the part. I'm thinking we need to go to the Makers Factory and see if they can manufacture the part for us, but that's another. So, we need to lay out, downtown needs to be laid out differently, new spaces created, could just be done as a remodel, or you could tear it down and replace it. And last but not least, Capitola. So, Capitola could be on the same site, or another site selected by the city. That would be your decision. We don't really care, just, we want the library. And it's programmed at 12,000 to 15,000 square feet, given the size of your community. We know that Capitola is under, is underused because people, it's very heavily used, but people don't stay. People don't stay in Capitola because there's no place to stay. So, they come in, they drop off, they pick up. But we know that a larger building would be very much used because Capitola, where it's situated, is a, it's a very, very popular location. People love Capitola Library, but there's, they just don't want to stay because it gets noisy and there's no place to sit. So, any kind of a joint project between the city, because you do have some RDA funds available, so this would be a joint project probably with, with the city and the, and the library district. So, what are the next steps? Well, actually, there's been some changes this week, so this slide's out of date, but you already had it, so I couldn't change it. The Library Joint Powers Board did create a subcommittee, a Facilities Master Plan Steering Committee, that Mike serves on, and that group agreed on Monday to sunset in March and to delegate a lot of the work that needs to be done to a working group made up of the administrators from the four jurisdictions. So, Jamie Goldstein serves on that, you've got Susan Murriello, Steve Ando, Martine Bernal from the City of Santa Cruz, myself, and the Finance Director from Santa Cruz. And we are working on what is it going to take to implement the plan? Things from revising the Joint Powers Agreement, which expires in 2017, and would need to be renewed before we could get any funding, to which of the options should we go for? And how should they be phased? And how much money can we get? And we're, we've got a consultant on board to help us deal with the money issue. We did do a poll, just to get a sense of the community and where they were at with regard to the library, and I'm going to go into that very briefly. But while we wait, the library is focusing on the most urgent maintain items. We really don't want to put any money into facilities that we're pretty sure are going to be replaced, so obviously, any emergency in Capitola, we would deal with. But, other than that, we're trying to look at those places. The, the windows in Garfield Park are leaking, waters and, water and libraries don't match, so we're having to replace those windows. We've got a wastewater line downtown library that's leaking, also leaking. Really not a good idea, it's in the ceiling. That's got to be replaced. So, we've identified the most urgent maintain items and donate, devoted some of the budget to that. The operation, operational budget is, is doing better than it has in the past, so we, as sales tax recovers, we had a little bit of extra money we're putting towards the urgent maintain items. And we're working to build public support. We're trying to give the public what they want. We've got some exciting programs and services that would be a totally different presentation, but that's what we're doing at the library. What you can do is really support the system focus. This is a system issue. Everybody needs to get something from this, everybody. We are a system. We know that people from throughout the county use other libraries. Capitola is a prime example. The Facilities Master Plan does have a chart in there that talks about who, where people live and what library they use. And it's really a very interesting chart, so I suggest you, you take a look at that. Best viewed in color, so. It's, we, we really are a system. Everybody just fluidly uses libraries, branches throughout the system. Community advocacy, obviously, always, you're always advocates for the library, but we need support. And what I'm going to add to that is, Tuesday, October 22nd, the Shadowbrook, here in Capitola, supports your sales tax, is giving one-third of their net proceeds that night to the Friends of the Library, if you identify yourself as being with the Friends of the Library. So, that's a way to support the libraries, to go to Shadowbrook. I'm going to be there with several, a lot of other staff, so hope you'll join me between 4:00 and 9:00, and let your waiter know you're with the, you're with the Friends of the Library, and they'll get some money. Library Joint Powers Board is going to be making a number of decisions. We hope that we can get your support when those, as those decisions are made. There may be a political campaign that happens to support this measure. We'll be looking for support from everyone for that. And we may do some preliminary design, we're not sure yet. That's something the committee's going to have to decide, how much design before we, we do a measure, but there'll be some work done. So, obviously, since the Capitola project is, is much more of a partnership perhaps than some of the others, given that you've got a, a major contribution to make, we'll have to be in close contact on that. So, the poll results, very quickly, libraries are very important to the quality of life in Santa Cruz County. This is the results of a poll in 1994, 2007, and now in 2013. You can see that from 2007 to 2013, libraries were either extremely or very important to 91% of the people. Gene Bregman was our pollster, he said he's never seen results like this. It's absolutely phenomenal. So, as you can see, that the only shift in those two is between extremely and very important. So, it's, it's not in the somewhat or not important, but changed at all, it was that shift between extremely and very, between 27, 2007 and 2013. Is the library doing a good job overall? Excellent and good, 82%. Once again, phenomenal numbers, particularly what we've been through in the last few years. And I am proud to say that management is viewed as excellent or good, and it's by 72%. Also extremely good numbers, according to Gene, so. Do we need more money for the library? Well, 77% say there's great or some need. And do we need money to repair, maintain, modernize local library facilities? Once again, 75% some need or greater need. Through education, we hopefully can move more of those into the great, there's a great need. But the public does recognize that we do have some physical facility needs. There were two votes on an $84 million revenue measure, and the initial vote was 75% would definitely or probably yes. After they received information, it still stayed at 75%. So, that's a very strong indication that there's a lot of support out there for some sort of a financial measure. As we drill down and get more specific, we'll probably do another poll. We found out from the poll that which election, doesn't matter whether we go in June of 14, a special mail-in election, or November of 14. At this point, given everything else we need to do, we're probably looking more like November of 14. The library's accomplishments were appreciated, the problems were recognized, and the opposition minimal. And just a couple of things, open hours for libraries have been restored, so that every branch is open at least five days a week. There's even two branches open on Sundays. 67% felt that was a very positive accomplishment. The lowest we got was a 46% on libraries provide more places for meetings and community events. Even the low numbers were extremely high, according to Gene. Reasons to oppose the measure, government bureaucrats continue to waste our money. I mean, we don't may not want to ask that one today, but anyway. Two thirds, not locally, two thirds of our tax money goes to salaries and pensions, and only 18% thought that was a problem. I do not use public libraries and do not see why I should have to pay for them, 8%. So, those are amazing, so there really isn't, there's not a lot of opposition. So, reasons to favor it? Lost my notes. People felt libraries are very important for children, basically for children, technology, and seniors. Those are the areas that they, they felt were really important. So, it's pretty exciting results, actually, wouldn't you say, Mike? And that's it.
Very good, thank you very much. Tell me about what kind of downsizing you experienced over the last number of years?
Well...
In terms of personnel?
In terms of personnel. When I got here in 2009, we were laying off, and we laid off again in 2011, and we laid off 25 people then. We are now down to 85 regular employees, and we use almost a similar number of temporary employees on, well, on-call, and temps. When I got here, we were at about 130, I believe. We have regular employees. I've seen, and then it went down to 115, I think it went down to 115 when I got here, and then it's now down to 85.
And do you have to use the, the temporary people very often? When people are sick or on vacation?
Yes, when people are sick or on vacation, we need to bring temps in because we don't have any spare within the regular staffing. We also use library aides who are our temporary staff to do the shelving, to do check-in and shelving, which we used to have regular staff doing that, but we upgraded regular staff to do, so they could do more at a little bit of a higher level, and then kind of the, the really tedious work of checking in materials and shelving is done by temporary staff.
Michael, want to ask some questions?
You know, and Sam was involved on the library board when we had the task force. I might add that with that reduction, the two levels of reduction in staff, we went back around to a third less people, and the libraries are open a third more with a third less staff. And it was with the full cooperation of the union, with the library employees, with the staff and the volunteers, and it's really a major accomplishment. And the fact that with this facilities program, the finances of which I'm still not completely in agreement with as far as how much and where, but what we're able to do is with all of these expansions, not increase staffing. That's the real magic of it. The fact that we can have a, we can go from a 4,000-square-foot Capitola Library to a 14,000-square-foot library and the same staff run it. That's very, very significant, because really, the facilities are for 50, 60 years, staff costs us every day and forever. So, if all goes well, and if it's planned properly, as it is now, the increase in the facilities and the increase in the services won't mean a ballooning of staff costs, which is pretty impressive.
No, yeah, that's true. It really will all depend on the design that we can, if we can design properly, we won't need to increase staff significantly. Felton is very bare bones. It's, the really small branches are one staff member and one aide, and those, they're all part-time. So, their, their increase in size will require more staff. But Capitola, we might need to add one, you know, or half-time or something, but hopefully not too much, if we can design properly.
And the facilities consultant on this project bore out what our consultant that we paid for three years ago in designing the optimum Capitola Library, they came up with the exact same figure as far as, because of the circulation and because of the use of it, the 12,000 to 14,000 square-foot model was the same recommendation, which was interesting.
Dennis, you have a question?
I have two questions, and maybe Mike can answer this. I was under the impression that we'd already chosen the site for the Capitola Library. Well, that's not what was presented us.
But they're, I think they're just saying that they don't care.
Oh, okay.
Put it at City Hall, put it on clares. They put it at City Hall, put it on Claire's, it doesn't matter. This facilities plan only spoke to what square footage and what facilities a certain community should have because of the use, desires, and requirements of that community.
My other question, Teresa, is for you, and you've been here about 10 years, right? About something like that?
Four years.
Oh, four years. Excuse me.
It feels like ten.
Bobby does, okay. Yeah, you started out in the bad and brought us to the good. So what, what is your feeling now about the concept of technology to facilities? In other words, what, what is, what is the need and what is the demand as relationship of book depository as to a technological advanced center?
It's a, it's a good question. I'm going to answer it in two ways. One, it's interesting, one would think that libraries would need less square footage because they would need less books. But actually, the square footage is starting to look like we need more because the trend is to, instead of having really tall shelves that half of us can't reach up high and half of us can't reach low, depending on our age or physical condition, so we're trying to get shelves lower so they're more accessible to people, and then we need more space for people to meet. Technology takes up more room than stacks. So if you're, and I know that's not quite what you're asking, but that's the first part of it. If you're going to have computers for people, even if you're just going to have a space for them to sit with their own laptop, and then they need electricity to check in, that takes more square footage than, than stacks, which can go up. So you're all on a flat level, as well as having comfortable places for people to sit and to meet and talk with each other. Now, the question, do we need libraries, are there going to be any books? Yes, there are going to be books. There's a lot of people, we probably don't need more space for books than we have now, other than the fact that we're bringing the shelves down. When we designed the Scotts Valley Library, we designed for about 2% to 3% growth in the physical collection for, I think, 15 or 20 years. And after that, probably no growth at all. But we're still going to have, there's always going to be some physical materials. Formats change, DVDs take up less space than VHS did, so we picked up some space there. You also need space for the technology. Libraries are still, not everybody has computers at home, not everybody has high-speed access at home, and so libraries are still a major place for people to go to use technology. We're also finding with eBooks, that's probably your question, why do we need libraries? We have eBooks, I'm sitting here with my iPad with my book on it, I read on my iPad all the time. You need to download from somewhere, and the library provides that. Yes, we provide it electronically through the computer system, but people need help with that, and a lot of libraries are setting up stations where people can actually do the downloading in the library, so then people can then take the materials home. So we're finding that there's a greater and greater need for the library in terms of technology. And staying up to date, like I said, our e-reader classes are oversubscribed, we have to have four staff teaching these e-reader classes. So kids give their parents e-readers for Christmas, and then go back, fly back home to wherever, and then there's the, the parents sitting there going, now what do I do with this thing? And, and every year, they come into us and we teach them how, and how to get an email account, because you have to have an email account in order to, you know, download some of these books. So I know it's a long answer, but I, libraries play a vital role in providing technology to the public, and technology takes up more room, not less.
Thank you, Teresa.
Sam, did you have a question?
Oh, I did, thank you, Maren. Hi, Teresa.
Hi. Been a while.
You know, the facilities master plan was just starting when I, when I left, and so it's really, I'm really glad to see it now having been completed and being presented and moving forward. I think I had kind of a couple of questions, and one, I recall that, you know, we were about 90% of open hours in the library system, and, and even here in Capitola, and I was wondering how we were doing at this point in terms of getting back to, you know, full 100% of open hours within the system. And determining the public financing for the facilities master plan, I was wondering if there's more specifics about, you mentioned 2014, are you thinking we'd be able to move that quickly? And what kind of public financing are we talking about? Sales tax, parcel tax?
Okay, let me.
And finally, I mean, and of course now, you know, because we're, I think, moving toward like a 2017 kind of deadline to have a new library here. Will we be able to bring this all together by that time?
Okay. Let me answer your first question on the hours. We have gotten nothing but compliments on the hours. We've gotten absolutely no complaints or concerns on our current hours. The statistics, usage per hour and visitors per hour are actually down. Overall usage and circuit, and visitors are up, but per hour is down, which is an indicator, by a little bit, not a lot, just a little bit, which is an indication that we have enough hours. And the cost of, you know, for additional staff for those hours, we need, going back to that balance piece again, we need to have all these things in balance. We've got the collection at this point, which is at about 10, 10% of, of the budget. The goal is to actually get that up to at least 12. And, you know, the facilities being a major issue, the technology being the issue, so it's trying to keep all that in balance. So I believe, and actually this is probably better, Mike might be better off answering this than me, my sense from the Joint Powers Board is that the hours are okay, that maybe we don't need to add those in order to keep everything in balance. We have not recovered that well yet. We are barely, we're not quite back to where we were in 2007, '08, and of course, expenses have gone up. I mean, just talk about PERS and healthcare, those two items, and, aside from regular and, you know, still a little bit of inflation, so we're not really at a point yet where we, we can add anything more. And, and it seems to be good. I, literally, I'm still getting complaints about interlibrary loan, which we hope to bring back, new computer system next February, March. I'm still getting complaints about, you know, getting rid of the magazine exchange in the lobby, but I'm not getting any complaints about the hours. And I was getting them, so that's an indication on that one. Your second question on the actual measure, we are exploring different options. I don't think it'll be a sales tax. One of the issues is Watsonville will most likely not be included, so we've got to do something that we can exclude Watsonville. Sales tax, I believe, would be nigh on impossible to do that unless each jurisdiction, I suppose, added one. So the, the two major options really are general obligation bond and a parcel tax, and we're still investigating those. They're, given our structure, we may be limited to which one we can go with. So we're really not ready yet to, to say what we're doing, which way we're going. There was another, there was a much longer part of that question, and I missed, I, I lost it.
Well, I think it's just, our timeline here was 2017.
Oh, 2017.
Right, and.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, that's part of the phasing that we'll need to be doing, and I, my hope would be that, and we haven't worked this out in the committee yet, I've done some of it in my head, but should we be fortunate that we got a measure passed next November, the money would be immediately available, so we could start. And so that would be 2014, so I don't see any reason why, I mean, Capitola's at the top of the list, and why, I think Felton and Capitola both are going to need to go early. Downtown's going to probably be, probably two years planning and then two years building, so there may be things going on consecutively. We'll probably have to hire somebody to manage, manage all this. So I would see that, I really, Mike, I don't know if you hold me to this or not, but I really think 2017 would be reasonable for, for Capitola, plus the fact that you have that commitment, that's going to enter into it as well. You also have money to bring to the table to help, to help with it. So I really, I really think that if we can pass it in 2014. Now, if we have to put it off till 2016, that would be, then I don't think we could do it.
Right, well, I would, I, I think that, you know, if we could present the master plan in that respect, and focus upon the city's contribution and our ultimate goals in this partnership that we're going to have, I would, I think you would have tremendous support within this community and in this region, this area, to expand the Capitola Library, because it's used from people all over, SoCal, Live Oak, and, and as I recall the data, and so I think that that would bring in a lot of constituents who would want to support that project. Well, thank you.
Unfortunately, in the cross tabs on this, we could, we did not have enough respondents from Capitola to do any cross-tab results, but the other places where we could do them, interestingly, we were able to do Felton because we could do Felton, and what's the next one?
Ben Lomond?
Ben Lomond, thank you. I live there, I live in, I'm tired, I've been going since seven this morning, so. Felton, Ben Lomond, we were able to do, Scotts Valley, we were able to do, and Live Oak, SoCal, we were able to cross-tab, and in all of them, we actually did really well. So I don't doubt at all that Capitola wouldn't do well.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Do you have some questions?
I do.
This is a public hearing, I'd like to open it up and have members of the public speak if they would like to. Thank you, we may have some more questions afterwards. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Well, I feel like I just listened to an advertisement for technology corporations indicated by some of these statements. Technology plan is a major part of what we're doing in the library. Technology takes up more room than stacks. I thought librarians, books and librarians, and people going there to read books were, was what libraries were all about. And the statement was made that libraries are important for children. Well, it's important not to microwave children. It's important that libraries and everywhere be safe and healthy environments. It's like the elephant in the room that no one wants to discuss. At least if there were an elephant, you could see it, but the microwave radiation charging through the air in our bodies and damaging us can only be seen with special instruments. I think this is a very grandiose plan. I'd like to see the technology part removed, and I'm going to, and also, I'd like to see the antenna that's on top of the Capitola library there, at the corner of Wharf and Claire's, should be removed. I understand it's from the Capitola Police, it's appalling that that's on the building there. I have submitted, and I don't go to the library hardly ever because of the Wi-Fi radiation, I used to love to sit there and read, and there are other people who avoid the library. And here's, I'll, I'll leave you with the packet, I left with the library board. It says, governments in part, organizations, and libraries around the world have banned or warned against wireless technology. And there's an article here by Diana Thatcher, and this is from her article, Libraries Keep Public Library Wi-Fi Free. A shining example of the alternative in action is the National Library of France, the equivalent of our Library of Congress. France's National Library recently placed a moratorium on Wi-Fi and exchanged microwave radiation for wired connections. They based their decision on a scientific medical research demonstrating harm from electro pollution. You've also been presented over the years with that data. This library consists of 1.5 million holdings located in four tower buildings, a staff of 2,500 employees, and a budget of 254 million. I respect that the Santa Cruz Public Libraries have always strived to accommodate persons with disabilities. However, since Wi-Fi has been installed in the libraries, those with electromagnetic hypersensitivity or radio wave sickness have been denied equal access to our libraries. Since 2002, the electromagnetic hypersensitivity is recognized by the U.S. Access Board, which is a federal agency that enforces Americans with Disabilities Act. Therefore, in order to accommodate all library patrons, Wi-Fi must be removed immediately from the libraries. And in fact, the library services for people with disabilities policy states, libraries must not discriminate against individuals with disabilities and shall ensure that individuals with disabilities have the equal access to library services. Under the facilities section, the policy states, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires that both architectural barriers in existing facilities and communication barriers that are structural in nature be removed. This statement indicates that Wi-Fi should be banned.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
So how can a library disregard their own policy?
Thank you.
I'll leave you, the packet that I've distributed to before, the wireless Wi-Fi needs to be removed, and we shouldn't act like it isn't a problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, again.
Hello, again. Nell Swenson.
Hi, Teresa.
Good to see you. I haven't seen you since the dedication of the Scotts Valley Library. Just, just, just a few thoughts, because I know this is really, really early in the process, but obviously, as folks brought up, the city had an ad hoc committee that studied the siting of a new library, and it, clearly, the first choice was the existing location on Wharf Road. It's well-suited for a library, easy access via Wharf Road, particularly for the large percentage of customers that come from the SoCal area. It has ample parking, and it would serve a very useful purpose of providing public parking for the city park at the Rispin Mansion, that the city is in the process developing now, and parking which can't be provided on the site itself due to the butterflies. So I didn't have the most up-to-date plan, I'm sorry. The one I had, actually talked about a 20-foot, 20,000-foot facility for the library, but interestingly, it showed a site plan and elevations for a combined library and police department in City Hall built in the Pacific Cove. And that was a little bit of a surprise because there hasn't been a great deal of public process as far as building a combined library, police station, City Hall megastructure facility in Lower Pack Cove, which is an area which many Capitolans, including Councilman Norton, feel strongly should ultimately be open space. The 20,000-foot library, it apparently would be smaller now, maybe more along 14,000, 15,000, but a 20,000 would require 79 parking places in an area where we are already desperately short of parking. And incidentally, the city figures it costs 29,000 to create one new parking space in Pack Cove. That means that just the parking for a new library in Pack Cove would cost almost $2.3 million. And a significant percentage of the users will come from outside Capitola, adding still more traffic to the congested Village area and its approaches. And then the library is going to be tucked in between a police department and city offices right on a curve of one of the busier streets in Capitola. All in all, not a very calming or nurturing environment. In all, it's bad public policy. Why do we need to do that when we already have an excellent, popular, and relatively serene library site on Wharf Road? I am sure also that the residents in that part of Capitola would appreciate retaining the public amenity of a library in their neighborhood, other than seeing it, rather than seeing it relocated into the craziness that is Capitola Village. So I would just urge the library system to try and stay as far clear as possible of the political battle of moving the library to a new site in Pacific Cove. I think that would be the smart political thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Good evening, again.
Hello. Well, clearly, when somebody talks taxes, I listen. And a whole bunch of organizations are going to have their handout in 2014, and I think you will find that there's more opposition than you.
Please address the council.
Oh, that there's more opposition than you think to this. And so I think that it's good that you're doing with less staff, all kinds of areas you're doing with less staff. I think that where the Capitola Library is, is a good place. I think that's a perfectly good building. If you've ridden by New Brighton School, those portable buildings will last a very long time. So I don't know that I necessarily see anything to do that, but I just think that, and I would be real curious to know how much the library powers spent surveying all of us to say that, you know, 74% of us think we ought to tax ourselves more for the library. So I think that there might be more opposition than you think when you go for a tax.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll close it and bring it back to the council. I had a question for you. I know a lot of people like to donate books to the library, is that really a help?
Books that are donated go to the, basically go to the Friends of the Library, and then they sell them, so yes, it's a help.
They're not used for the collections at all?
Not usually. We have done studies that show that an item donated to the library, unless it's an unusual item that we don't, you know, it's an old, rare item that we can't get any other way, costs us about, I think it was like $30. costs us about, I think it was like $30 to add a book to the collection and with all the processing that has to happen. When we get our material, because there's a lot of staff time involved. When we order our materials, A, we get them at a discount, sometimes as much as 40%, depending on the item. And then we get the materials pre-catalogued, pre-processed. We're starting to get them, so they come in to the library and we just, we don't have to do anything to them. We just send them right out to the branches. All that work is done pre-processed. So it's much more efficient for us and cost-effective to do it that way. So usually donations don't go into the collection unless it's an unusual item or for some reason we really need it. We do use, donated items actually go to the jail. We have, we serve the jail, so there's some items, certain books, we can't take to the jail.
The men's jail and the women's jail?
Yes, both of them. And like I said, they go often go to the, they go to the Friends where they're often sold. So they do benefit the library, so yes.
Can't really have a volunteer work on that? So it won't cost you so much?
No, that's really technical work that staff has to do. But I will, you know, each of the branches has its own book sale and that money, the Friends end up donating to the library over $100,000 a year. And a lot of that money is coming, their lobby in downtown library brings in close to $40,000 a year for book sales. So don't discount the book sales themselves. They really do benefit the library because the Friends turn around and support us. And depending how we go on this, on the facilities, we're going to, the Friends, we're going to be looking at the Friends groups to really support some of the extras. Scotts Valley Library, they're probably over $300,000 now, probably $350,000 in terms of what they've contributed to that building. A lot of the extras you see in that building are because of the Scotts Valley Friends and their incredible fundraising. Whole patio was paid for by the Friends.
We're going to be talking about low-flow toilets pretty soon. Are all of your facilities energy efficient and you have, with lighting and toilets and...
Now?
Yeah.
No.
Can you work on that sooner rather than later with our water problem?
Probably not. We don't really, that's part of the maintenance money. That's part of that, that maintenance money that we don't... I mean, Live Oak is, Scotts Valley is. Lighting, they know they've done some work in some of the branches, but I don't know that we've done toilet refittings. Those will be, those are part of the facility's master plan. They're expensive.
But in case that's years away, my, my hope would be that you could do that sooner.
It would be a financial issue and, you know, if we know what we're doing with the buildings, if we know a building's going to be replaced in two years, no, we wouldn't want to do it. If it's going to be 10 years, then we might, that would be part of the, that is what's built into the facility's master plan, the deferred maintenance piece. I talked about how renewable energy and just energy efficiency in general is something we care a lot about, but it takes money and we haven't had, you know, we have to prioritize when we have water sewer lines that are leaking or windows that are leaking. We have to prioritize those because if those go, the collections go and we're, we have to close down.
I understand. Other questions? Thank you very much. We're, our, just, our action is just to receive the report tonight. No action tonight at all, but thank you very much for a thorough presentation. The next item is Item 9B, Consider An Ordinance Amending Chapter 13, Point 02 of the Capitola Municipal Code pertaining to Water Conservation Plumbing Fixure Retrofit Requirements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a very simple item. The two water districts that serve the city of Capitola have requested we amend our water conservation retrofit ordinance to change it from low-flush fixtures to ultra-high-efficiency fixtures. It's a program that is monitored and controlled by the water districts. They go out and check that on sale property that the proper plumbing fixtures are put in. There's no additional staff time required from the city to enforce these regulations. And our recommendation is that you adopt the ordinance first reading today and we'll bring it back next meeting for final adoption.
Thank you. Other questions? Dennis?
Does this mean our sewer fees are going to go down, Steve?
I don't think so.
Other questions? Tell me again who's, and how this is going to be enforced.
So the water districts actually track through the, work with the local real estate agencies. They track sales as properties go into escrow and make sure that they get a certification before escrow is closed that the fixtures in the building have been, meet these requirements. They actually go out and do an inspection on each one, draw the certificate that the title company needs before they can close that escrow.
That'd be a good, good article for our newsletter to let people know about this so that if they're going to be buying or selling a house, that this is going to be a new requirement and it's going to cost somebody some money and it's going to be part of the new system. And I know there's some people that don't like, you know, mandating these kind of things, but within this day and age with our water problems, we have to. And we may not like it. Toilets can be expensive, but in these, I'm not sure how, what the cost range of these is going to be, but it's, we have to do everything we can to stretch our water.
And I know SoCal Creek has this program to help people pay for it, and I believe Santa Cruz does. It's not quite as big, but they, they do have incentive programs to help people do the conversion.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address us on this issue? Toilets and showerheads. And SoCal Creek does also give away low-flow shower, showerheads right now. I wonder if they're going to give away any of these newer ones. They won't, they, we'll have to find out about that. Good evening.
My name is Peter Petru and I'm kind of opposed to using these very low toilets because you need water to flush it down, down the street. And if you don't have the water, then you're going to spend much more money keeping these sewage pipes open. And nobody seems to address that. I know in the Monterey hostel, we have, we had one-half gallon per flush toilets. They use an air compressor in the basement to get it, get it, get it going. But since it's only half a gallon per flush, I don't know if the problem just will get further down the road where you, this stuff gets stuck and who's going to, who's going to vacuum it out?
Right. Well, we'll see about how, how it works.
Okay.
Steve, could I ask you just a question about the word, or of the ordinance? The ordinance is directed for toilets of high efficiency, which is defined as 1.28 gallons per flush. But under Section E retrofit, it seems to imply that you have a, if you have a pre-existing toilet that's 1.6, that, that would qualify, that doesn't need to be replaced.
Yeah, so if you're meeting the existing code right now...
So if you're at 1.6...
You can stay there, right.
You can stay there, you don't...
Right.
And many of the toilets now are actually at 1.6.
So they're just going after the, you know, the two and a half gallons.
The high users are going to be forced to more modern 1.28 toilets.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to be sure I understood that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I will move the staff recommendation and note that we lead exciting lives.
I'll second it. I have a couple of comments. Has anyone taken a shower with a 2.0 gallons per minute flow? Anyone experienced that? Well, you have to experience it to know what they're talking about here because it's not a comfortable thing to go through.
It's missed.
Okay. It's not an easy adjustment. Okay. You better put a bucket underneath you and pour the bucket back over your head and you'll probably work a little better. The second thing is, can you imagine the complications in escrows on who deciding who has to replace them? I mean, is there a decision for, it says has to be replaced, but is it the selling party or is it the buying party that has to...
It's usually the seller. It happens now.
Uh huh, yeah.
With bringing this down to the 1.6. So it's just changing what they put in when they sell the house.
So it is the seller's responsibility?
Oh, yeah. Realtors deal with it all the time.
It's the same as a smoke detector.
Yeah, exactly.
Realtors and plumbing kind of work good together.
Yeah, it's an associated regimen.
Okay, okay. I'll second Mike's motion.
Any other discussion or comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is Consider A Resolution Of The City Of Capitola Accepting The Transfer Of The Rispin Property To The City Of Capitola And Terminating A Purchase Agreement. And this was one of the most confusing reports I've ever read, the history of the Rispin Mansion in terms of deeds and so forth and back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. And here we are again, back and forth.
I apologize if the staff report was confusing.
No, it's, the issue is complicated and confusing, but it was a good, wonderful staff report. It was just, the history is kind of unbelievable.
It is a difficult history to swallow at times and it has been a complicated process. This is frankly, what I think is, is potentially the second-to-last administrative step that we're going to be going through with Rispin. This was something that our attorney for redevelopment, our redevelopment agency suggested that we do, which is accepting the final action of the Oversight Board now that we believe that the Department of Finance has taken a final position on this. Unfortunately, the Department of Finance has not taken, actually issued an opinion. They've simply been silent. We believe that there's statute of limitations to contest. The city's transfer of the property has expired and therefore it's ours, so we're accepting it. We did, in fact, make it through one more hurdle this last week, I believe. The State Controller's Office completed their final audit and they did not make any findings regarding the Rispin property. They did try, they have demanded $50,000 in payment for what they found as interest payments that shouldn't have been made. The city has disputed that. Nevertheless, their audit has been finalized and they will be clawing that back, it appears. So the final step in this process, and then hopefully we can figure out and talk about what we're going to do with this property, is coming up here shortly. In the next couple of meetings, we'll be bringing an item to you which is required in the RDA dissolution, which is a long-range property management plan. And we are going to develop a long-range property management plan and submit it to the Department of Finance that says that we, as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, have no property. If that's accepted and finalized, I think we're done with this process. That, to me, seems like the last potential hurdle we have to cross. So that report's due in Sacramento in November. We're looking at the statutory requirements of what needs to be in this thing. You'll see it, it'll be a silly report saying it's a property management plan for no property. But after that, if the DOF accepts that, I think we're done. So the recommendation today is to simply accept the property now that everybody else's actions to authorize it have taken place.
Questions? Sam?
Well, what if the Department of Finance says, "Well, we don't accept your long-range management plan because we think there is property."
Right, right. And that, that's certainly possible and that's the last hurdle, as I, as I mentioned. At that point, there would be one of two courses of action. Option one would be that under the long-range property management plan, we could revise it and say, "Okay, we own this Rispin piece of property and our long-term plan is to transfer it back to the city for public park, public use," which is allowed under the law. The other option would be to fight legally about it and we'd have to make that decision if, if the Department of Finance were to take that action. But just because the DOF actually denied it doesn't preclude us from making, taking the transfer. It just would then, you know, the long-range property management plan would have to make certain findings and identify how the property qualified for a public use and therefore transfer back to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Tori, did you have any comments about it? Tori's, Tori's available if we, if we have any questions or comments about it. Someone should write this whole history up because in the, in the, I mean, while it's fresh in our minds, because...
Fresh in whose mind?
I know.
I sit on the Oversight Board and I've been following this on a monthly basis and we keep on saying we own it and the Department of Finance says nothing. They're, they're mute on it completely. And we're just going along to the process, assuming it because we've forgiven the $1 million-plus loan. So our ultimate position is we keep on owning it and ultimately it'll be ours. If not, then we're going to revisit the $1.3 million loan.
Maybe it would be a good thesis for a graduate student at UCSE to write, write the history of the Rispin, just so it'll be there for the future because it's been so convoluted.
As long as they included a final solution.
Well, it's a happy ending.
That would be the doctorate.
Yeah.
Public project's gone bad.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't think anybody would read it, but I mean, just for his, just for his, just for history, I mean, just for the museum to have, have it there.
Read dissertations.
I know. Okay, any other questions? Is there any public comment about this? Open the public hearing.
I think we're going to get an idea of what to do with the Rispin.
Good evening.
Hi, fourth time, I guess, Peter Petru and from Santa Cruz. And Santa Cruz City was faced with a similar problem what you have on your hands. Congratulations, by the way, for being the owner of Rispin Mansion again. And we'd like to get, help you get out of this problem, okay? Santa Cruz had the problem, having inherited the Comanida Colleges, which were seven buildings up on top of Beach Hill, great location, close to the beach, close to downtown. And the city didn't know what to do with it. You know, they were, they were in very poor condition. They were condemned, actually. The tenants, someone who didn't feel like paying the bills, got, got kicked out. And, and we were lucky enough, Santa Cruz Hostel Society was lucky enough to convince the city council and the city fathers to lease us this property. And a dollar-a-year lease and no money attached, okay? We had to find the money. We had to find the contractors. We had to fix the buildings up and give us something like 10 years. And, and we got it done. And it's a hostel, it's 45 beds and it's making money. And, and we get lots of young people from all around the world staying there for $26 a night for a bed and about $50 for a private room, which we have, we have five private rooms. Some of them have, have up to six bed, six beds. That's $90 for, for that one room that has six beds. So I think this is a perfect solution and all you got to do is copy the lease and let us sign it and your problems will be over. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move the staff recommendation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Jamie, has, has anyone ever sent the DOF the conditions of approval and the deed restrictions that are on this property? Maybe one letter just said, "These are the conditions that go with, permanently with the property." Would completely take them out of it?
Councilmember Norton, that, that would be the process. If this, if the property management plan that we submit that says we don't have property, that's where we would make that case and say, "Look, this is, this is public property for public use and therefore transferring into the city makes the most sense." Hopefully, we don't have to resurrect those documents, but... We make the mistake of calling it a mansion. I think that gives people in Sacramento a totally wrong picture of what that place is.
Well, if anything should go down in history, it should be those 164 conditions of approval. It took seven years to formulate them.
That should be included in the report. Okay, the next item is Item D, our last item for the night, Consider A Request For Staffing Adjustments In The Community Development Department, Finance Department, and The Police Departments.
Councilmembers, I'll try to make a relatively brief presentation tonight as I think a lot of the details were included in the staff report. But what we're talking about here is a number of changes that have been, that I'm proposing at this point because of some different adjustments we've made over time and some transitions that have occurred within various departments. You'll recall that in the adopted budget, we included the part-time development services tech in the community development department. It was funded and it's currently been vacant for this fiscal year. We, the staff in the community development department has decreased from 4.67 that we had in 2.7, in 2007, down to 2.67 today. And really just two bodies working there today. And that has been the result of the redevelopment agency dissolution, the downturn in the current case processing, which we're starting to see pick back up. And so to supplement those efforts, the Finance Department and the City Managers Department, we've allocated resources primarily to help CDD with administrative and financial, sort of billing and administrative workload. In addition, we have had a number of contracts with outside planners to help out with larger, larger current planning cases. So in reviewing this, it's worked pretty well, having finance in the city manager's office step in and provide some administrative support into community development. And you'll recall that in 2007, we had an associate planner as well as a development services tech. And it's looking like it's working better to basically push out some of those administrative and financial tasks to CM and Finance and try and backfill a position now in community development that's a little bit above the development services tech and a little bit below the old associate planner, somebody who can help with the more minor projects at the front counter, things like that. And that would free up the develop, the director and the senior planners' time to focus on the more major projects, the zoning ordinance, the LCP update, the general plan update. So this is piggybacks. We're recommending a half-time assistant planner position and defunding the .67 development services tech, which results in some savings, which we would then be recommending that we push into the Finance Department. And what we're suggesting in the Finance Department really is partially the result of the increased workload from community development and also the result of the transfer of the... of the accounting tech that we moved down to the Police Department a couple of years back, and that we've had a, an accounting clerk who's worked out of class to backfill some of those responsibilities. And so using some of the savings in community development, we're recommending transition the finance clerk to a finance tech, increasing slightly some of our finance clerk hours to make up for some of the workload that's been pushed over from community development. And overall, between CDD and Finance, these changes are effectively FTE and dollar-neutral. Then there's a third piece of this puzzle that we're suggesting at this point, and that is the administrative assistant, who works on so many projects in the Police Department, has been back at a point, three-quarter time position for the last several years. And due to the frozen captain position and where we are today right now, the chief and I are recommending that we can move that up to a 90% position, relatively low cost. We're going to have that station open five days a week, get that Friday afternoon back. And it's $5,700 in this current fiscal year, and it would be about $11,500 in a full fiscal year. So there's a number of moving pieces that we're talking about here, but I did want to take one step back and remind everyone where we've come from, from 2007, sort of the staffing levels. And these are the administrative and police staffing levels here. They're not, don't include field crew, we don't include the museum. There's been some other, other departments that have had some changes. But we're still around five staff members down from where we were on sort of the administrative and police levels from where we were in 2007. And the change we're proposing tonight doesn't really appreciably change one way or another where we are, where we are today. I'm available for questions. And here's the recommendations, if you wanted to see them all listed out.
Mike?
I think it should be noted that no one on this council was comfortable with the staffing levels in 2007, in planning and finance especially. So thanks for not changing it dramatically and seeing the one-tenth of a full-time employee go into the Police Department and understanding what's happening over there and getting our full five days, I would be in favor of it. But just so you know, a goal should not be to get back to 2007. It wasn't a good year.
Other questions? It's Sam?
Oh. Jamie, I did, on the Police Department, administrative assistance, it's a mid-year cost of $5,700 in this fiscal year. Where is that proposed to come from to fund it?
Trying to remember the budget resolution. I think the language, do you recall, Tori? Otherwise, I'll look at--
Currently, it was to come from fund balance. However, there might be salary savings in, in the Police Department as we go through the mid-year.
So either the fund balance or through salary savings, budgeted salary savings?
Right, right. Generally, this amount of money actually is within sort of the margin of error--
The margin of error, yeah.
Usually within the department. We, we are proposing the adjustment just to cover it, but frankly, last year, we closed out more than $50,000 to the positive and policing easily could have covered it.
And, and, and in community development and finance, that looks like a net savings, actually, in this year.
It is, a slight savings.
Yeah, it's a slight savings and from what was budgeted.
Right, and we will have some salary savings from the first, we're now three months into the year.
Is our analyst in the Police Department interested in more hours?
The analyst in the Police Department is working full-time. She's a full-time position. It's the, Lori's position, and she is interested in moving to 90%.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Any comments? Then I will--
Treasurer--
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, please go ahead.
Mike, can you elaborate on 2007 wasn't a good year? Can you just explain the history?
We were all uncomfortable with the fact that we felt that we were overstaffed for what was going on at the time in both finance and in planning. And having, you know, four, five, or six people for a city this size in that department, we've all, we've all expressed concern about that. And the work the city manager's done, the staff, in reducing from 51.5 to 46.5 has been praised. I just always want to note that we don't want to slip back because we had concerns before. We don't want, 2007 seems like a lifetime ago, but I just wanted to remind the city manager that we all still remember.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move the staff recommendation?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's the end of our, of our agenda for tonight. Are there any last-minute oral communications or announcements?
Yes. You know, for the city manager, I know the chief is on vacation, well-deserved vacation. And I would like to get the notes presented by Sandy regarding Park Avenue. There were some really interesting concepts there, and I think it should be passed on to the chief. And hopefully, there's a copy of this in the city manager's hands. Yes? The Sandy Erickson PowerPoint?
I will get a copy and get it down to the right folks.
Yeah, there's, there seem to be some ideas in here that we can work around the current state regulations with regard to traffic studies and make Park Avenue a little bit safer in certain areas, so it's, it's worthy of discussion.
Yeah, at least answer all of those points that, that were brought up, whether they're possible or not possible--
Yeah, yeah.